Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill Number 1530, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Tucker Independent Medical Experts, Inc., in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,900 for Professional Services in Connection with Litigation. Bill Number 1531, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $5,000 in Favor of Linda Green as Final Settlement Related to the Action Filed in the Common Pleas Courts of Allegheny County. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 1532, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Accept a Grant from the Pennsylvania Museum and Historical Commission in an Amount Not to Exceed $22,000. This grant will be used in connection with department funds to execute contracts for architectural inventory of historic structures in the Oakland neighborhood of the city, cost not to exceed $44,000. Bill Number 1533, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter into a Second Amendment to the Cooperation Agreement for the Program Administration Assistance with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership Regarding its Offer to Provide Administrative Assistance to the City for the Market Square Public Art Program and to Enter into an Art Exhibition Loan Agreement and License with Alicia B. Wormsley and Ricardo Robinson and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for the Loan of Ascension for the Program's 2019 Display. Bill Number 1534, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the Master Park Planning Process for Hayes Woods. The Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $100,000 with a Local Match of $100,000 to Come Out of the 2020 City of Pittsburgh Capital Budget. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1535, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for Renovation of the Southside Park. This Grant Proposal Includes an Ask of $400,000 with a Local Match of $400,000 that will be allocated in the 2020 City of Pittsburgh Capital Budget. In the Event the Grant is Awarded, this Resolution Provides Foreign Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $800,000. And Council President Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 1536, Resolution Appointing Michael Domack as a Commissioner of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Term to Expire March 31st, 2023. Mr. Domack will fill a seat that has been left vacant. That concludes the reading of the legislation. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh's City Council for today, Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Ms. Strasburger.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Here.
Five Members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I ask that you would please remain standing then for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, the republic, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our first order of business is proclamations. We begin with Councilman O'Connor.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, graduate students. Right. So, we have a lot of these in the city of Pittsburgh and we are honoring some of them today. We have a number of graduate students across our city, probably about 20,000-plus that make up our city, and we are doing Graduate and Professional Student Appreciation Week in the city of Pittsburgh. So, there will be events and seminars going on all across the city. So, whereas Graduate and Professional Student Appreciation Week is designed to raise awareness of the role of graduate and professional students within the nation's colleges and universities, and whereas more than 20,000 graduates and professional students currently study in Pittsburgh, and whereas graduate and professional students are the future teacher, professionals, researchers, leaders in of politics, business, cultural, and educational institutes that are so important to this city, the nation, and the world. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 1st through the 5th, 2019 to be Graduate and Professional Student Appreciation Week in the city of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. So, we will have a couple of students, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, talking about the importance, and I would probably say that most of our council offices have a graduate student in them at this time. So, we understand the importance of graduate students.
Sure. And, uh... Mr. President, Members of the City Council, Councilman O'Connor, on behalf of 75,000 graduate students in the city of Pitts in Carnegie Mellon University, and with 20,000 in the city of Pittsburgh, I want to thank you for recognizing our contributions to the city. I'm Suri Agarwal. I'm a PhD candidate in biological sciences at Carnegie Mellon University and currently serving as the president of the Graduate Student Assembly. Graduate students don many hats, where the engines of research and sort of also asking the most pressing and difficult questions of our times, pushing the boundaries of knowledge and creativity. Not only that, we're also contributing to the education mission of the university by teaching undergraduate students and grading their work. You already alluded to how we also contribute to strengthening the local economy, but also being such a diverse group, we serve as global ambassadors to the city of Pittsburgh. And so, for all of this and recognizing our efforts, we really want to thank you for recognizing graduate students. Thank you.
Okay. All right, good. Madam Clerk, we have two procs to be read into the record. You have, I don't have you on my list, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
I believe we have people here from PACE.
Oh, I have you as being read into the record, of course. No, come on up, Councilwoman.
I think they're, I think for him, let me check.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Good morning, welcome.
Sorry, my stuff's not good. Hi, there we go, Program to Aid Citizen Enterprise. Thank you all for coming down.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. It's good to see you. Hi, thanks for coming down. So, here we go. Whereas, Program to Aid Citizen Enterprise, a partner agency of the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania, is a nonprofit funder and management support organization that was formed during the Civil Rights Movement in 1968. And whereas, for more than 50 years, PACE has been a vital and relevant community resource in an environment that has improved in many ways, yet is still profoundly challenging for African-American and communities that are marginalized. And whereas, PACE's mission to advance a more equitable community by increasing the capacity of African-American and other individuals, groups, and organizations that uphold social justice. Whereas, since its inception, PACE has provided over $11 million in grants plus technical assistance to over 300 nonprofit organizations. And the programs of PACE provide organizational capacity that enhance and increases participation in partnerships and strategic alliances that would help make Pittsburgh livable for all of its citizens. And whereas, at its core, PACE believes in the importance of increasing the efficiency and effectiveness of people and community organizations, and the programs of PACE focus on funding and capacity building, community resource development, education, and advocacy. Whereas, PACE will once again set the table for the 11th Annual Inclusive Voices Luncheon, an event that, as the first of its kind in the region, has encouraged diverse, engaged, and interested participants from different walks of life to share a meal, share ideas, and conversation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 5th, 2019 to be PACE Inclusive Voices Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
I may have a motion in a second, please.
A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Absolutely. So, this is yours? Who would like to speak first? Introduce yourself, let us know how to get to the one.
To the City of Pittsburgh Council, thank you so much for again recognizing PACE and the work that we are doing to continue the conversations that bring us together as a community. My name is Linda Baker. I'm Chair of our Board of Commissioners, and on behalf of PACE and our staff, our executive director Lucy Dabney, we appreciate the support and the continuing support for this event in the city.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, we have one to be read into the record by Councilwoman Kell Smith, please.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Marilyn Hornsby and I Am Whole mentoring for helping youth women achieve their goals and not become another statistic, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, April 6th, 2019 to be I Am Whole Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
I have a motion in a second, please.
A move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the proclamation portion of our council meeting, and it will take us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, will have three minutes in which to do so. I am going to take this time to remind everyone here that the rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time or could at another time come before this council. We do not permit profanity and we will maintain order at all times. I ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald M. Miller, Belts, Hoover, and Homewood, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President of the United States, 2020, globalintelligencessociety.org. We fuse 21 different forms of intelligence to solve social problems. A concern of City Council is local security. 2017 to 2019, I have asked the district representatives, DRs, of Pittsburgh City Council to answer 10 local security questions. Response to the questions is ultimately the responsibility of Mr. Kraus, who is the president of City Council, PCC. One, is there chem nerve agent VX in Pittsburgh? No response, NR, PCC competency zero out of 10. Two, is there U-235 in Pittsburgh? DR 8, Strasburger, and PCC physics competency, NR zero out of 10. Three, is there Biogen CRISPR work in Pittsburgh? DR Strasburger and District 6, Lavelle, PCC competency, NR zero out of 10. Four, are there self-reproducing nanobots, autonomous nanobots, in Pittsburgh? DRs Strasburger and Lavelle, PCC competency zero out of 10. Five, is there sufficient anti-terrorist information regarding age? INVSA? DR Strasburger and PCC competency, NR zero out of 10. Six, is there a safe level of fluorine in Pittsburgh water? PCC competency, NR zero out of 10. Seven, is there DPS, Department of Public Safety, action or council legislation to require bullet-resistant composites in the entryways of Pittsburgh synagogues, mosques, churches, temples, atheist meeting sites? DR five, O'Connor, PCC, NR zero out of 10. Eight, is there council legislation to do a referendum on continuing the presence of a BSL, Biosafety Lab 3+ in Oakland? DR Strasburger and Lavelle, PCC competency, NR zero out of 10. Nine, is there a black-budget, secret, police, 5O-type group under the thumb of Mr. Perdido's Office of the Mayor and Clandestine Authority? PCC competency, NR zero out of 10. And 10, is there any proclamatory or legislative evidence that any DR is sociologically anti-pedophilia? Are not sexually predatory Roman Catholic priests a local security threat? PCC, NR zero out of 10. Overall, on these 10 local security issues for PCC President Kraus, District 3, zero out of 100. Now, this is ludicrous. It is preposterous. There isn't an elementary school homeroom kid, President, who would pass this type of incompetency. 100% false, while he does that up in the front.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? We have a lot of people wishing to register comment this morning, so please come up. Good morning, Ms. Mira Montez.
Hi, Pittsburgh City Council. Stormy Mira Montez, 4740 Bonne Boulevard. I would like to make a public comment about recent physical violence and gun violence in our city. Last Thursday, I was watching the news and a man had shot two people, one died, over a parking space, as they were leading the man out of his home in handcuffs. He had the nerve to be wearing a Stronger Than Hate t-shirt. A few years ago, we had the backyard barbecue massacre in Wilkinsburg. The black-on-black crime is so bad in Pittsburgh that the bodies are stacked so high to heaven, we don't even have to pray to get up there anymore, just walk up the steps. The Tree of Life synagogue murders in Squirrel Hill was so hateful and senseless that to this day, that man still has not given us, himself, or God, an intelligent explanation for the crime. There are junkies who are coming into Pittsburgh who just happen to be legal gun owners who are selling their weapons just to get high. Police stations are not communicating with each other or keeping track of who is allowed to buy guns or whose guns should be taken away. It is not the weapon, but the intent of the person handling the weapon that you should be concerned about. Last summer, William Marshall and NAACP members attacked me at the Juneteenth Parade and called me racial slurs. The judge ordered William Marshall to do 15 hours of community service, and I brought this matter to Pittsburgh City Council. Last Saturday, the city of Pittsburgh allowed William Marshall and the Juneteenth Committee to hold an Antoine Rose rally to help his friends elevate their, their election results. I, I, I think you know that William Marshall and the NAACP is racist and violent, but you are willing to excuse that to pick on hard-working Pittsburgh citizens who have the legal right to protect ourselves, our homes, and our families by any means necessary. It is not the weapon that is the problem, it's the intent of the person handling the weapon that's the problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mira Montez. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I, I came down today because, I mean, I've been coming for 20 years, but I, I want the city, the citizens, to understand why I complain so much. Okay, I come and we're supposed to, Wednesday, we speak first. Okay, but you know, I'm sorry, I keep looking at you, he don't allow me to look at the people. He holler at me if I turn my head. But anyway, the people were supposed to speak first. There was a fire, a car on fire, because I walked down the hill, and I remember there's a black man standing there, and I walked past, he said, "The car's on fire." And I look, "Is it your car?" He says, "Yeah." But the civic arena, one of them employees, he come running down, and he's hollering, "Go back." You know, he's trying to stop it, but the people can't really see. So, I get down to, at the end of the civic arena, that's where the traffic is, it's stop. So, I got my purse and something, I'm saying, "Fire, fire, go that way, go white." I must have been looking funny, because I seen a white lady, she looked, she smiled at me, and like, "Okay, I know." Okay, so, when I went to step to go on the curb, the one white man, he did like this. Like, when he did like that, I said, "You go that way, that way, not that way." I wanted to go to get burned up. Now, the reason why I'm bringing all this is that the, we were supposed to speak at 10. They had a meeting. After 10, 10:15, they're still standing around, they, they talking like they're in their living room, they're standing and talking. I didn't know what to do, but I ran in there and I told the receptionist, and he did call. But I'm saying, the police need to tell him. "Oh, I remember to talk, our policeman." So, I go and I tell him, and he calls. Do you understand I'm saying, if it had been 10 o'clock, I could have spoke like I wanted to, you would have known. I can't talk because this is, they, you know what? They act like it's their living room. They stand around and they talk. And if I go to say something, and look, okay, I got three minutes, and I may be finishing my sentence, and I go to them, "Your time is up," but they can take and tell us about, "We want to feed the pigeons, then none want to feed the pigeons, then this want to feed the pigeons." I mean, they go through. And, and look, I'm, I'm really upset because if I come down here, there's a reason, you don't know what's happening in my neighborhood. Anytime the mayor says that he's going to start new police chief and put him in every neighborhood, he's going to come and talk. And with Ms. Ms. Gross, I still don't like her from what she said, "We decided that we would put the hill with the Lawrenceville." How come I didn't know it? Very few black people went to speak at all, because we're at the top of the hill and we can't get down, the seniors can't get down to Mercy Hospital at the bottom. We must go to two buses, two buses. But when I came down, there's white people trying to find the garage where they stand at, that you pick them up at the garage. They get picked up at the garage when they come down here and shop. We got old people that can't get down to the bottom of the hill, and the first thing you say, "Take access." They have to pay for that.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
They have to pay for that. You know you don't mean it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Okay, may we have our next speaker, please? May we have our next speaker, please? Hi, Mary, good morning.
Good morning, Grace.
Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. I'm a third-generation Pittsburgher, and I chose Pittsburgh to give birth to a fourth generation. I live in the South Side. My name is Mary Kinesi. I'm actually one of Bruce's constituents. I am near everything you want to claim a legal gun owner is not. I'm a woman, I'm a mom, I'm actually highly educated, and I've spent my career advocating or taking care of people in healthcare. I wanted to also take the opportunity to thank Ms. Harris, Ms. Kelly Smith, and Mr. Coghill for taking their oath of office seriously, understanding that the gun ordinances that are being proposed are illegal and a distraction, an overreach of authority, and in the end, it will only cost Pittsburgh time and money. You know, I'm puzzled by folks on council that think that their no, their, their, their cause is noble. How is it noble to break an oath? How is it noble to deny others access to the protection that you have? How is it ethical as elected officials to take gifts of pro bono legal work? And how can we not believe that these gifts don't buy influence? How will you pay for the opposition's attorney fees and costs when you lose? At best, these ordinances are misguided reaction to do something, which I understand, but at worst, they are politicizing a tragedy and attempt the fear monger people into believing that by taking guns away from law-abiding citizens, legal guns, that somehow people will be safer, and that's just not the case. You all know the truth, and you've stated it, it's been on record. You know, no one will be safer from criminals or psychopaths by your actions today. The bad news is you actually may kill a few law-abiding citizens, sadly, but most probably in the most vulnerable of our communities by the laws that you want to vote on today. As you know, magazine capacity bans are being overturned as unconstitutional. Law enforcement officers are refusing to act on red flag and gun confiscations confiscation laws, and 2A sanctuary counties are popping up across the country. The good news is you have united more of us than you actually know. We are united despite genders, races, political affiliations, sexual orientations, socioeconomic statuses across all of the neighborhoods of Pittsburgh, and sometimes from beyond the neighborhoods of Pittsburgh. You know, the sad part is that soon we'll all be united in breaking your illegal laws.
Mary, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, may we have our next speaker, please? May we have our next speaker, please? If there are no further speakers, I'm going to close public comment.
Sir.
Okay? Good morning, welcome.
Hi. My name's Dennis Jordan. I'm from the 31st Ward of the city. My, my, what, what I got to say has to do with the Second Amendment and what you're intending on doing, I imagine. The laws that are on the books, and there are plenty of them, now, I know yous don't, yous don't enforce them. Yous use them as bargaining chips, the, well, not use personally, the, uh, when, when someone does something, for instance, a crime with, with a gun, they're supposed to automatically get five years added to their sentence. For instance, that, they use as a bargaining chip. I know this for a fact. I've worked around these courts for 37 years, 138. I've been in this courthouse for that long. I've followed a lot of cases, I've followed a lot of things, I actually do title work, but now, if you, if you look back at the cases, they, they use them as bargaining chips. They say, "We won't give you this if you plead guilty. We won't give you that if we plead guilty." When someone commits a crime with a gun, there should be no plea bargaining, none. Why, why would you plead bargain a case if, if someone committed a murder or a crime with a gun? I have plenty of guns, I do, I, I admit it. I collect them. None of my guns hurt anybody. I'm not hurting anybody. I have no intentions of ever hurting anybody. I live in the 31st Ward, there's no police station up there. Okay, the closest police station, if I call the police, it takes them 45 minutes to get to my house. 300 foot up from, from my house is West Mifflin. Okay? Now, I'm not, I'm not going to be allowed to, to have my, what, what I own because of this, this ordinance that yous make. My, my family has lived here in Pittsburgh for fifth, for, since Civil War. My grandfather, my great-great-great-grandfather fought in the Civil War, fought for the north. I'm, I'm ready to move out of this place. I mean, really. Yous want to control people? You want to take away my right to, to, to protect myself? If I call the police, it takes them 45 minutes to get to my house. In that 45 minutes, do you know what could be done to my family? If I can't protect myself, why do you... If I can't protect myself, why do I wanna live here? And, and bless everybody, the, the Tree of Life, I, that, that was the worst day of the city. Okay, bless everybody involved. I, I, I am a Christian.
Thank you. Yep, sorry, your three minutes has expired. Thank you for being here this morning. Can we have our next speaker, please? If there are no further speakers, I'm gonna close the public comment portion. Okay, I'm closing the portion of public comment for this council meeting, and we're moving into presentation of papers. We begin with our Chair of Finance and Law, Councilman Burgess.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilmember Reverend Burgess presents Bill number fifteen thirty, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Tucker Independent Medical Experts in an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred dollars for professional services in connection with litigation. Bill number fifteen thirty-one, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of five thousand dollars in favor of Linda Green as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number fifteen thirty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning of the city to accept a grant from the Pennsylvania Museum and Historical Commission in an amount of twenty-two thousand dollars. This grant will be used in conjunction with department funds to execute contracts for an architectural inventory of historic structures in the Oakland neighborhood of the city, not to exceed forty-four thousand dollars. Bill number fifteen thirty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a Second Amendment to the Corporation Agreement for Program Administration Assistance with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership Regarding its Offer to Provide Administrative Assistant to the City for the Market Square Public Art Program and to Enter Into an Art Exhibition Loan Agreement and License with Alisa B. Wormsley and Ricardo Robinson and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for the Loan of Ascension for the Program Twenty-Nineteen Display. Bill number fifteen thirty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the master park planning process for Hayes Wood. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for this stated purpose. Bill number fifteen thirty-eight, resolution, amending resolution eight twenty-seven, authorizing the Director of Public Works to create a veteran banner program to waiver or reduce certain fees per section four sixteen oh two of the Pittsburgh Code to hang banners approved by the Director of Public Works at specific approved locations in the city by removing the approval of the Arts Commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. As requested the administration, I'd like to motion to waive rule eight on bill fifteen thirty-three so it can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. May I have a second on the motion?
Aye.
Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, seeing none. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Fifteen thirty-three will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Governmental Affairs.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill number fifteen thirty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program to provide funding for renovation of the South Side Park. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars for this stated purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. May I have Councilwoman Kell Smith for Councilwoman Strasburger?
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the chair has, uh, two new papers. May I begin with the appointment, Madam Clerk?
Council President Kraus presents Bill number fifteen thirty-six, resolution appointing Michael Duhmarche as Commissioner of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire on March thirty-first. Mr. Duhmarche will fill a seat that had been vacant.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Councilwoman Harris?
Your last name?
Yeah, on this one, please.
Motion to interview.
Yeah. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Yeah, agreed. Do you have discussion on the motion to interview? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I will work with, uh, the clerk to schedule that interview as quickly as possible. And then we have a communication, which I will need a motion to read, receive, and file, please.
Bill fifteen thirty-seven, communication from Kevin Polis, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the city's of Pittsburgh's Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Uh, may I have a motion to read, receive, and file, please?
No move.
Second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, thank you very much. That takes us into unfinished business, and without unfinished business before the council, we go into reports of committee for final action. Uh, we begin with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, uh, our committee, our Chair on Public Safety Services. Councilman, can we take two eighteen, two nineteen, and two twenty separately?
Sure.
Thank you. Do something's under... Uh, yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number fifteen twenty-five, report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for March twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven ninety-six, resolution establishing the Stop the Violence Initiative to reduce both police officer-related violence and proximity-related violence in the city of Pittsburgh.
Take that one separately? Wait, hold on, Madam Clerk. Can we take, do you wanna take, uh, eleven ninety-six separately first, and then take the, the gun bills?
Yes, please.
Yes?
Yes.
You're the chair, Councilman, if that you wish. Okay. All right, so then let's stop with eleven ninety-six. Uh, you've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Eleven ninety-six, is there further discussion on the bill, beginning with, sir? No? Councilman? No. Okay. Seeing no discussion, eleven ninety-six is ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll just on eleven ninety-six?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Ayes eight, noes zero.
Good, okay. Then, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the bill having received the legally required number of votes then is finally passed. Now, under our Public Safety Services Committee, Madam Clerk, may I please have the purpose of, uh, twelve eighteen, twelve nineteen, and twelve twenty?
Bill twelve eighteen, in ordinance, amendment and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter six oh seven firearms, ammunition, and other weapons in its entirety, and enacting and adding article eleven weapons to the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances in order to meet the public safety needs of residents. Bill number twelve nineteen, in ordinance, amendment and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances by then, by enacting and adding article eleven weapons, chapter eleven oh four prohibition on the use of certain accessories, ammunition, and modifications, and chapter eleven oh five, authorize for addition of large-capacity magazines. Bill number twelve twenty, in ordinance, amendment and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at title six, conduct article eleven weapons by adding chapter eleven oh six, prevention of extreme risk to children, and chapter eleven oh seven, extreme risk protection orders.
Yes, all three, please, Madam Clerk. I'm trying to get the Councilwoman on the phone.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. So you have heard the reading and the title of, uh, bills, uh, twelve eighteen, twelve nineteen, twelve twenty. Further discussion on the bills begin with Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as everybody can see in front of them, there are technical amendments, so I would like to make a motion, um, to amend by substitution.
Councilwoman?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Do we have discussion on the, uh, motion to amend? Councilwoman Harris.
Yeah. Do you wanna go through this? It's pretty thick for this.
Uh, the, they're all relatively the same changes. Um, it's the entire bill. Um, there are just capitalizing ammunition, large-capacity magazines, and as well as strengthening the severability amendment, um, the severability clause, but they're all very technical and changes, nothing substantial to the actual bills that we passed the other day.
Is that one or all three?
All, all three, because when you change one title of verbiage, you have to capitalize it in all three, so that's why there's a lot of them there.
I will be voting no on the amendments today, uh, because, uh, they're unconstitutional.
Do we have further discussion on the amendment on the bills? Okay, seeing no further, uh, discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions?
No.
One no, two nos on the amendments. Okay, thank you. Councilman O'Connor has amended?
Oh, thank you very much. Um, so I wanna thank everybody. Um, we've had a long couple of months on the, these bills, but I wanna thank all council members. Um, as I mentioned the other day, I think we're, we're all on the same page that we wanna stop gun violence. Uh, a couple of us are just, have a difference of opinion on how to get there. Um, I also wanna thank a number of people in the audience today. Moms Demand Action, Ceasefire, PA, volunteers from the community, the autodidic students that, that couldn't be with us today. And then I also wanna thank Councilwoman Strasburger, um, who gave me a statement that she would like me to read on her behalf. Um, from Councilwoman Strasburger, "I am proud to have been a part of authorizing these ordinances that rein in the use of assault weapons and certain firearm accessories. Protect Pittsburgh's children from the dangers of firearms. Fund anti-violence and group violence intervention initiatives. Help to address suicide, family violence, and group violence in our community, and increase public safety in our neighborhoods, public places, places of worship, and other institutions. I am under no illusion about the limits of these ordinance. This cannot be the end of our work. Certainly, it's not for me. I look forward to building on the progress of passing these ordinances and continue to create a more peaceful and safer Pittsburgh." She would like to thank her council colleagues as well as the mayor on these bills. So that is from Councilwoman Strasburger. Again, I wanna thank everybody, um, for their support and their hard work on these bills, especially our staffers as well as the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, further discussion on the bills then with Councilwoman Harris?
At first, I'd like my comments brought forward, uh, from last Wednesday's meeting and any other comments I have made. Uh, if we were the state and the federal government, we could vote on these, but not being the state or the federal government, and it's very clear in the state law that only the state can vote on these, and all it's gonna bring us is lawsuits. It's a shame, but even if you try putting this in, uh, we're not going to be able to protect our children because the guns are lost or stolen. What we could've done is did a resolution asking the state to work on these bills and the federal government, but that's not what we have here today, and this piece will sit, well, it won't just sit, there'll be lawsuits, and, uh, the bill will sit with bill, uh, from nineteen ninety-three, where the same action was tried. Anything we should be doing is asking the state and the federal government to do something other than to put a bill in that's very meaningless, uh, and will not serve the residents of the city of Pittsburgh because we do not have the right to change any laws on guns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Yeah, I, um, again, I made a lot of comments last week and I, and over this, this course, um, but I wanna also congratulate and thank Councilman O'Connor because he's given everyone else credit, but he really has done a lot of work on these bills and really tried to work with council members to get us all on the same page. You know, and I'm sorry that I cannot be there for these bills, but I, I don't take my oath of office lightly, and I don't take away, I don't take people's rights lightly either. And, um, the, one of the things I have mentioned from the very beginning that was disturbing to me is that these types of bills disproportionately affect the African-American and Latino communities, um, if they're enforced. And I know we're not going to enforce these bills, but the message that we're sending to the people that are shot weekly in this city, to me, um, is not a good message. And so I, I, I think that while I, I have very strong feelings in that area, I think that Councilman O'Connor has been a great leader in this and, uh, working with all of council members. I think that, um, you know, his staff has done a tremendous job trying to add amendments and do cer- do certain things. And I mean, uh, every, it's correct, it, it takes a lot of courage to stand up and do something that you believe in. I believe that, for me, I believe that we should've done something a long time ago when, at, you know, when I thought that we had some, some opportunity to do so, um, to address the violence in the, um, predominantly minority communities, you know, years ago, and yet we've seen so many homicides since then. And as I said before, we, we had a very different reaction after the Tree of Life than we have to the homicides that occur in the city on a regular basis. Although I have voted for bills in the past, we saw that they were not enforced. We saw that we, you know, we know that we cannot do this. I think we could've accomplished all that these bills now accomplished, now that they've been whittled down and amended so much. I think we've could've accomplished all this in a resolution without causing a lawsuit to the city and, uh, made a statement a- as well. But I think that we have to remember that when we're making statements, when people are, are shot and killed, the people are shot and killed in the city on a regular basis. Um, and it shouldn't just be when one, one horrific tragedy occurs. It should be, it's a tragedy whether it's one person, eleven people, you know, two people, whatever, it's a tragedy. And so I, I, I'd love to go to Harrisburg. I'd love to work with you on these bills. I've worked in the past and voted in the past on, on similar, um, you know, on, on gun bills, but I'm not gonna, I'm going to vote no today, but I do wanna thank Councilman O'Connor for his, um, great leadership in this and his, and his work. I mean, he really was outstanding.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilman Coghill?
Yes, I guess, uh, first and foremost, I guess I would ask Madam Clerk to remove my name from the bills, uh, being that I'm not gonna support it. I guess that would just be the natural course, right? So, so let's make that, uh, official. Uh, you know, I think Councilman O'Connor says it best, you know, we all, all of us here, we may disagree or disagree in which method to, to approach it, but we all agree in control, gun control in some form or another. And, um, you know, I've said mostly everything I needed to say about it, and, uh, you know, again, I wanna congratulate everybody for their hard work in, you know, approaching this issue. It's not an easy issue to deal with. Um, it comes with a lot of challenges. But, uh, I also would like to extend a offer or an invitation to Kim Stolfer, Sam DiMarco, and the doctors who are at the table, for those of us who will not be involved in a lawsuit, to, uh, meet up in Harrisburg, and I'd love to see where they're gonna meet us, and if it's just about controlling or, you know, um, getting a mental illness, uh, law's under control, if that's the only thing they're coming to the table with, I'd say just stay home because, uh, you know, that's not sufficient, so, thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Further discussion for members. Okay, I would only add that, um, I would like to correct a, a few statements that were made. Uh, in nineteen ninety-three, while Jack Wagner was here on council, and I forget exactly how that vote went down, there was an assault weapons ban that was put in. Um, and it was ultimately overturned by the state, or at least the state put legislation in place saying that we didn't have the authority to do that. Um, and so, uh, the idea that somehow law has existed in state for all time saying that we cannot do that is, uh, miss, uh, factual. It's not factual. Um, and the fact that the city did take a stand previously, we did have an assault weapons ban on the books. The state retaliated by saying we didn't have the authority to do that. Um, in the twelve years that I've been here on council, uh, I have worked diligently with, uh, Ceasefire and a number of other organizations to take our cause to the state and to ask the state to act, and in twelve years, there's been no action by the act, and in 12 years, there's been no action by the state. I remember a few years back, we had a city employee that was murdered while on the job on Birmingham Street in Carrick. And he was murdered the day that one of our Western Pennsylvania delegation was actually on the floor of the House arguing to support the Punish Towns bill that would put us in great harm and great jeopardy, that if we took local action to protect our citizenry. So the idea that somehow we can take this to the state when what I have seen is they have actively worked against us to help us to protect our citizenry, I think, is not helpful. I applaud the courage of this council. I applaud the courage of Councilman O'Connor and Councilwoman Strausberger. I applaud Councilman Lavelle, Councilwoman Gross, Councilman Burgess, for the courage to stand up and to say enough is finally enough. With that, Madam Clerk, may we please call the roll on bills 1218, 1219, and 1220?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
No.
Mrs. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
No.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
No.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
President Kraus?
Aye.
Six ayes, three nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services, and our Chair... I am going to ask for... I am going to ask for order in the chamber, please. Thank you very much. Thank... I'm going to ask for order in... I am going to ask... I am... I am... I am going to ask for order in the chamber. Thank you. Our next committee of the morning is our Committee on Public Work Services, and our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Councilwoman Smith presents Bill Number 1526. Report of the Committee on Public Works for March 27th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1495. Resolution granting unto Chippy LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail and landing and concrete heated sidewalk at 5126 Butler Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1496. Resolution granting unto Urban Pittsburgh Downtown Hotel Company LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp and handrail and landing at 401 Wood Street, 1st Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1497. Resolution granting unto Nick DCO their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense handicap ramp with handrail and landing at 2517 and 2519 Penn Avenue in the 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1498. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from Smart Growth America to be used for participation in the Safe Streets Smart Cities Academy, not to exceed $8,000 for this stated purpose. Additionally, the city will provide matching funds, not to exceed $8,000, in order to receive said grant funds to be used for the same purpose.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Public Work Services Committee. Is there further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Ayes, nine, noes, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having then received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Forgive me, Councilwoman Gross, we have not read your committee, right?
Right.
We have not. Thank you. Our next committee is the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Gross. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1527. Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for March 27th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1371. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Carrick Municipal Hall, located at 1806 Brownsville Road in the 29th Ward of the city. Bill Number 1494. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to enter into a fellowship participation agreement with Student Conservation Association of Pittsburgh, not to exceed $15,583.78 for fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Ayes, nine, noes, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Our Chair is Councilwoman Erica Strausberger. May I please have Councilwoman Kell Smith for Councilwoman Strausberger?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 1528. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Access Management for March 27th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1499. Resolution, amending resolution number 149, which authorize the city to enter into an agreement with E-DOP Technologies for licensing services and maintenance and support services to update the scope of work and to add the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service as a signatory at an additional cost not to exceed $79,760. Bill...
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Do we have further discussion on the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Mr. O'Connor? Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Ayes, nine, noes, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Our last committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs with our Chair, Councilman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1529. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for March 27th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1513. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh official sewer facilities plan for Aylesboro Town Homes along Aylesboro Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Is there further discussion on the bill? Then, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?